And welcome to the Housing and Community Development Department's Virtual Fall Community Meeting. My name is Chris Robinson and I am a Senior Planner here with the Housing Department. And I just want to thank you all for joining us. I want you to know that you are important to our strategic planning process. And we are ultimately here to serve you as residents of the city of Houston. I just want to take care of a couple of housekeeping items. This meeting is being recorded, and so a copy of this meeting and a copy of the PowerPoint slides will be posted online after this meeting. And then, again, we'll have a second meeting on November 10th, if you want to join us again. But as everyone is joining the call, please answer the... Please tell us what neighborhood you are from. You can do this in the chat. We hopefully have a large representation from all over the city today. So please type in the chat. What neighborhood you're from? Great, we have a representative from Sharpstown. Great, we have someone from near North Side and a representative from Spring. Well, thank y'all very much for joining us today. I'm going to briefly cover the agenda and explain what to expect during this public hearing. Our interim director, Mr. Keith Bynum, will give us an opening address. We'll then have a presentation, which will cover all the great work that we've accomplished over the last year, especially as it relates to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We'll discuss the development of the 2022 Annual Action Plan and some of the goals that we're hoping to accomplish in the upcoming year. And then we'll talk a little bit about the Home ARP grant and how we'll be applying for that. After the presentation, we'll have a public comment period during which we hope to get your thoughts and opinions about how HCDD should develop the 2022 Annual Action Plan. We hope the presentation will give you more insight about the planning process before you make your comment. After the public comment, we'll have a 30-minute breakout group activity. We'll then reconvene and do a brief report out. And then we'll reopen the floor at the very end for additional comments and end with final remarks from Mr. Bynum. But for now, I'll turn over the floor to Mr. Keith Bynum for our welcome.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the 2021 Virtual Fall Community Meeting and Public Hearing. Thank you for joining us. We hope that you and your families are staying safe. The purpose of this meeting, we are here to gather community input about our 2022 Annual Action Plan and our newest grant called the Home Investment Partnership Grant, American Relief Plan, which will be better known as Home ARP Grant, will help us in addressing housing instabilities and homelessness. We will also present information about services and programs that HCDD provides. We will also cover some of the accomplishments from the past year, including some innovative approaches to addressing impacts from COVID-19. Treatback gathered tonight will be incorporated into our 2022 Annual Action Plan. As stated before, the format of the meeting, we are holding a virtual hearing and we decided to continue to hold the virtual hearings this fall to keep people safe. We have added new elements to this meeting in hopes of making the event interactive and so that we can hear from you and your thoughts and opinions. So again, thank you for participating in today's meeting. We look forward to hearing from you about the information you presented. And here is Chris to introduce our presenters for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. I appreciate that. Again, welcome, everyone. Sorry about that technical difficulty. So today, you're going to be hearing from several people. First, will be Ms. Kimmy Johnson, who will give an overview of our department and the purpose of our virtual fall community meetings. Then you will hear from Ms. Jess Caraway, who's going to be talking about our past accomplishments over the past year. And you'll also hear from Ms. Melody Barr, who's going to be talking about what we've done in the last year about our rental assistance program. Then you will hear from myself again. I will go over the Annual Action Plan. And then you're going to also hear from Ms. Megan Rowe about our Home ARP Allocation Plan, which is a new grant. We're excited to tell you about it. And then Ms. Mary Itz will give us a presentation, or excuse me, be our Master of Ceremonies for our public hearing portion. So, Kimmy, I'm going to turn things over to you.
Thank you, Kristen. Good afternoon. My name is Kimmy Johnson and I am a Fair Housing Education and Outreach Coordinator here at the Housing and Community Development Department. Okay, so we are going to begin with a very short poll. How well or do you know HCDD's mission? Is it A, we envision a city where everyone has a safe home? Is it B, we envision a city where everyone has a home they can afford and in a community where they can thrive? Or is it C, we envision a city where most people have an affordable home? Or D, none of those, none of these? So please pop your answer in the chat or answer the poll on the screen. Okay, some of those answers are coming in. We'll give it a few more seconds. All right, let's see where we are. So if you selected B, you are correct. So our vision, we envision a city where everyone has a home they could afford in a community where they can thrive. So we provide affordable homes, community and economic development, along with infrastructure, neighborhoods, and supportive services. So what are we doing tonight? Our goal is to discuss how we meet our mission every year by the work that we do. So we're going to talk about what HCDD has accomplished over the past year, what kind of, to kind of guide how we want to operate in the future. And so this information is included in a document that we call the CAPER or the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And so we'll also talk about the 2022 Annual Action Plan. And every year, we receive about $45 million in federal funding. And so every year, we developed an annual action plan, which reports HUD strategies for addressing housing and community needs in Houston. So this plan does many things, but the two major components of the plan is that it outlines the goals and it establishes how we'll allocate the $45 million over the next year. So every fall, HCDD, we host two public hearings to discuss the development of the Annual Action Plan of the upcoming program year and the CAPER from the previous program year. And our goal during the fall public hearing is to hear from you all. So we want to get your input about how we can meet the needs of Houstonians in the upcoming year. So after the fall public hearings, we will work through this cycle that you see on the screen. So first, we develop a new action plan. Then we come back to the public to talk about the draft action plan and to get input. And so after making the necessary changes, we'll submit that action plan to HUD. We implement, and next, then we report the goals and expenditures from that action plan through the CAPER. And so to understand key details about the Annual Action Plan and the CAPER, it's helpful to understand the federal formula grants. In both the CAPER and the Annual Action Plan, we'll focus primarily on the federal formula grants. So HUD anticipates that, excuse me, HCDD anticipates that HUD will allocate about $45 million to the city of Houston through four formula grants. So these grants that you see on the screen include CDBG, that's the Community Development Block Grant, HOME, which is the Home Investment Partnerships Grant, HOPWA, the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, and ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant. So we'll use these formula grants to address housing issues and to improve the quality of life for Houston residents. So with CDBG or the Community Development Block Grant, we provide housing, public services, public facilities, and economic development. We also provide affordable housing with HOME or the Home Investment Partnership Grant. And with HOPWA or the Grant for Housing Opportunities with Persons with AIDS, we provide housing and social services for people with HIV/AIDS and their families. And we also provide shelter and supportive services for people experiencing homelessness for people at risk of homelessness with ESG or the Emergency Solutions Grant. In 2020, HUD received about $66.2 million in CARES Act funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. This includes CDBG CV, HOPWA CV, and ESG CV funding. HUD has also allocated $37.3 million in Home ARP funding to address homelessness and housing stability. Under the 2020/2024 CON Plan, we established nine goals that we're going to work towards until 2024. And so these all fit within HCDD's mission to provide an affordable home in neighborhoods where people can thrive. And so with these formula grants that we've just covered, CDBG, HOME, ESG, and HOPWA, we strive to meet one or more of these goals with the programs and services that we provide at HCDD. So the first is to preserve and expand the supply of affordable housing, to expand homeownership opportunities, to provide assistance to persons affected by HIV and AIDS, to reduce homelessness, to improve quality of life, to revitalize communities, to promote health and safety, to foster community economic development, and to promote fair housing. So each of these goals are met by the work that we've done over the past year. And now I'll turn things over to Jess Caraway, who's going to talk about accomplishments. Jessica?
Thanks so much, Kimmy. Now, let's talk about what we've done through these programs and services. At the end of each year, we evaluate the work we've accomplished. This information is catalogued in the CAPER or the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The CAPER tallies our accomplishments and expenditures from the previous year. If there were any challenges in meeting our goals, we address those as well. This year, we also reported on our accomplishments and expenditures with CARES Act funding. In 2020, HCDD received CARES Act funding to prepare for, prevent, and respond to the impacts of COVID-19. CARES Act funding within the CAPER is noted with the acronym CV. For example, you would see CDBG CV or ESG CV or HOPWA CV. The last CAPER's reporting period started on July 1st, 2020. It ended June 30th, 2021. After gathering information from our program areas, the draft CAPER was published for a 15-day public comment period around the 1st of September to solicit input from the community about our accomplishments. Once that comment period ended, we responded to comments and included the comments and responses in the final plan. And then we submitted that plan to HUD for review and approval. Although the public comment period for this document has closed, we wanted to highlight some successes that happened in the last year. So let's take a quick look at what we've done throughout the 2020 program year. On the next few slides, we'll discuss the accomplishments from all of the funding sources, which includes the federal formula grants that the CAPER focuses on. Over the past year, we repaired over 295 single-family homes for low and moderate income families and provided 163 low and moderate income families with down payment assistance to help them purchase a home. We also funded construction or rehab of 98 multifamily affordable rental homes. Through our public services program, we assisted 312 people with homeless prevention and over 2,100 families with rental assistance. We supported the Houston Land Bank by funding land acquisition for future affordable home development, and we funded the construction of affordable homes that were sold through the Houston Community Land Trust. We also funded the development or improvement of three public and neighborhood facilities. Over 15,000 people were assisted through job training, childcare, youth enrichment, or other services. We received over 3,300 individuals, we reached over 3,300 individuals and businesses with information about the Section 3 program, which helps foster local economic development. We are also continuing a variety of fair housing initiatives. Last year, the Fair Housing and Hurricane Preparedness Outreach Program reached over half a million people. Through this program, we fund trusted messengers to spread fair housing and resilience information to communities that may not be receiving information from the usual channels. Last March, we started a new initiative to help train smaller landlords and property managers about housing discrimination and fair housing laws. The free workshop hosted two attorneys alongside one of our staff members, who provided information and answered questions about fair housing issues. With 240 landlords and property managers in attendance and very positive feedback, the trainings were successful and we have decided to now host these trainings twice a year. Our CARES Act funding is different from our regular formula grant funding because it was specifically allocated to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Through this CARES Act funding, HCDD has assisted over 1,900 families with rental assistance. 532 families were assisted with emergency shelter to prevent homelessness, and over 2,600 individuals or families received supportive services. Now, let's do a quick knowledge check. What is the document called where we report on HCDD's accomplishments? Is it the Construction Annual Protection Report? The Comprehensive Annual Financial Report? Or the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report? Or is it none of these? And it looks like we've got some answers coming in. Great, yeah, the correct answer is C. And it looks like, looks like we're getting a lot of correct responses. If you've answered the poll, please make sure to click Submit, and then once you've viewed the results, you can hit Done to clear the prompt. Please track our progress and stay involved. The 2020 CAPER is always available for review on the housing website. And that link should be in the chat. Part of who we are at HCDD involves making Houstonians more resilient. We normally talk about this in terms of natural disasters, but we are also talking about this in the context of the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, I'm going to turn things over to Melody Barr to highlight our Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Hello, my name is Melody Barr. I am the Deputy Assistant Director of Public Services. In addition to our regular services, the Public Service Division of Housing and Community Development Department has been working to provide services that assist families who are experiencing housing instability due to the COVID-19. Since March, since March of 2021, Housing and Community Development Department has partnered with Harris County to serve the community with the Houston-Harris County Emergency Rental Assistance Program, also known as ERAP. This program provided comprehensive rental and utility assistance to families who are at risk of losing their homes due to COVID-19. The Housing and Community Development Department funded this rental assistance program with the direct allocation of $156 million in the United States Treasury funding and $5.4 million in Texas Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. The combined resource total, about $283.4 million in rent assistance for families. The rental assistance is administered by two agencies, Baker Ripley and Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Galveston, Houston. But we also have organizations that provide case management services to families who participate in the program. Under this program, tenants impacted by COVID-19 may receive rental assistance for past due rent dating back to April of 2020 and up to two months of future rent for a maximum of 18 months total. The rental assistance is paid directly to participating landlords enrolled in the program. But if a landlord is not enrolled, direct assistance may be available for payment to tenants. Assistance is not first come, first served, but is distributed randomly amongst income-eligible households. Our department also worked to develop an eviction diversion program for families affected by COVID-19. It's designed to make payments to landlords who have initiated the eviction process in exchange for allowing tenants to remain in their homes with no further eviction proceedings to take place, meaning they will either dismiss or cancel the filing. Both the landlord and the tenant must agree to participate and meet the program requirements. As we stated before, we have allocated just over $283 million. As of October 15th, we provided or pledged assistance to over 58,000 households with $225 million in assistance with this funding. Received over 127,000 applicants and rolled over 21,000 landlords. We still have about $60.2 million in funds remaining to assist households, and we expect that this program will go through early December. Though we are hopeful that there will be additional funding awarded for the continuation of this program. If you are in need of rental assistance, please visit houstonharrishealth.org to apply. Or you may call the hotline at 832-402-7568 to speak to someone who may assist you. And that concludes my presentation.
Hello, everybody. One thing we do want to add is that the Texas Rent Relief Program may be able to assist applicants, but please apply as soon as you can. I think this program is closing out soon. So if you do need assistance and you don't qualify under our Houston-Harris County Emergency Rental Assistance Program, you might be able to receive assistance here as well. All right, and thanks again, Melody. We appreciate all that information about the Rental Assistance Program and the great work that we are doing with Harris County. So now we're going to talk about what we have done. We've covered what we've done over the past year, but now let's talk about the future. And we want to talk about what we hope to accomplish and what will be included in the 2022 Annual Action Plan. So what is the Annual Action Plan? Every year, we create this new strategic plan that sets the strategies for addressing Houston's housing and community development needs. And this plan is called the Annual Action Plan. This, the upcoming year will be the 2022 Annual Action Plan, which will set the strategies for July of 2022 through July of 2023. And again, the action plan outlines our annual goals and our strategies for allocating the estimated $45 million that we receive from HUD and formula grants. And so as Kimmy discussed earlier, we are currently hosting our fall community meetings where we're hoping to get input from you all about how we should draft the 2022 Annual Action Plan. And after this, from November to March, we're going to be developing that plan. And then in March or April, we will come back to you all with our spring community meetings and a 30-day public comment period on the actual, the draft action plan. And so the next slides that we will cover will include some of the programs or services that we hope to continue providing in 2022. So HCDD builds and rehabilitates multifamily rental units. And one of these developments is the Sunrise Lofts. It's an example of one of those projects that HCDD has funded. It's a new multifamily construction project that will use home funds. And the facility will offer about 89 units through the permanent, through permanent supportive housing for young adults who are at risk of homelessness. This facility will have onsite supportive services and activities like vocational job training, childcare, mental health facilities, and a host of other supportive services. It's also located in the greater Eastwood area, and it'll be near the Discovery Green Park and the St. Joseph Medical Center. And we're hoping to complete this project by August of 2023. So HCDD also has homeownership programs. HCDD uses home funds to partner with local nonprofits that develop new homes that are affordable to low and moderate income families or individuals. However, we also use CDBG funding and other funding sources to support the Home Buyer Assistance Program, the Home Buyer Choice Program, and the New Home Development Program. The Home Buyer Choice Program helps income-eligible home buyers with down payment assistance and closing costs as well. Under this program, the city and the Houston Community Land Trust have partnered together to provide options for home buyers to purchase a home of their choice within the city using this financial assistance from HCDD. The home buyer income must be less than or at 80% of the area median income. And the program is, will subsidize the purchase of a home up to $150,000. So if you're looking for an affordable, single-family home, I encourage you to take a look at our Home Buyer Choice Program. You can also visit the housing website to view affordable single-family homes that are available for purchase through other programs as well. Additionally, if you haven't already, if you already have a home, but you need repairs on your home, let's check out this video real quick about our Single Family Home Repair Program. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties on the video. So I will just give you a brief rundown. We are able to repair homes for income-eligible families. We, if the home is in such a state, we can also reconstruct these homes. And we use different funding sources to repair homes all over the city. I encourage you all to go online and take a look at our Single Family Home Repair Program. We've had a lot of families with great success. We also have pictures on our Facebook about our program participants receiving keys to their new homes or their newly repaired homes. So please take a look at that information. Let's move on. All right, so we want to know what's most important to you for homeownership? Is it increasing homeownership, homeownership counseling and training? Maybe you would like to see some new homes being built in your area or repairing single-family homes. Tell us, how can we help you best by answering this poll? And you should see that prompt coming up here shortly. Pick the best answer. It looks like it's almost 50/50 right now. About 50 people, 50% of people are saying homeownership, counseling, and training is helpful and repairing single-family homes. Those responses are still coming in. Thank you, guys. All righty. Alrighty, uh, well, looks like increasing home ownership options is most important right now. We'll continue to monitor that poll, but thank you so much for participating. So we also have our Public Facilities Program. And we build or improve public facilities, and one of these, excuse me, one of these developments is the Edison Performing Arts Center. And it is, it utilizes CDBG funds for the redevelopment of shopping center, of a shopping center in Fort Ben, Houston. Part of that shopping center has already been redeveloped with an affordable housing complex known as the Edison Lofts under our multifamily program, and so this is just an extension of that redevelopment, and we expect to include the Performing Arts Center and after-school program and additional retail space. Additionally, we are using CDBG funds to develop the Avenue Three-Sixty Healthcare and Wellness Center. It's a community facility that will provide healthcare and social services to those who have been affected by HIV or AIDS. It's located in Midtown, and again, this facility will provide dental care, medical primary care, and it will also help to educate persons who have been affected by HIV or AIDS or give testing. And although HCDD has funded the land acquisition for this building, we will continue to support programs and services offered at this facility. And actually, this facility is already open. It was opened on October twenty-second, so if you have a chance, please go check out this beautiful facility. Also, HCDD provides financial support to nonprofits to provide essential services to residents. These services include healthcare, childcare, job training, legal services, and so much more. And actually, Melody Barr, who was presenting earlier, is a part of, is the head of this team. And so, just on the screen, you'll see a list of the, these public services that we provide and a few of the nonprofits and the other city departments that we partner with to provide these public services. So again, let's hear from you guys what's most important to you. We'll take a minute or so to look at this poll. Do you see youth and childcare services as a benefit, maybe mental health or healthcare services, or maybe senior or employment services, or maybe there's something else that we should be thinking about? Take a little bit of a thought on this one and let us know in this poll what you think. Great, responses are rolling in. I like that you guys care about mental health services. I think that's fabulous. Okay, we'll move on, but you can continue to answer these questions throughout the presentation. And right now, I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Megan Rowe, who's going to talk about the HomeARP allocation plan.
Thank you, Kristin. As Kristin said, my name is Megan Rowe, and I'm the Fair Housing Analyst here at HCDD. I'll be walking everyone through the HomeARP allocation plan. So, for a little background, on April eighth of this year, HUD announced that it would allocate funds under the American Rescue Plan to help communities across the country create affordable homes and services for people experiencing homelessness or for those at risk of experiencing homelessness. HUD allocated thirty-seven point three million dollars to the city of Houston to serve as a means to alleviate the affordable home shortage and the significant human and monetary cost of homelessness in our city, both of which have been exacerbated by the COVID- nineteen pandemic. The Home Investment Partnerships Grant under the American Rescue Plan, which I will refer to as HomeARP going forward, functions similarly to the regular home grants discussed earlier in this presentation, but it is different because it does not allow for homebuyer or homeowner activities. However, it does allow for public service, services programs and the acquisition or development of non-congregate shelters. And again, we want to stress that the HomeARP grant, its main focus is to assist with housing instability and homelessness, specifically to assist families or individuals that are experiencing homelessness or are at risk of experiencing homelessness or are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. This funding can also be used to help veterans and their families as well as other vulnerable families. Here's a simple breakdown of HCDD's proposed budget for the thirty-seven point three million dollars in the HomeARP funds. HCDD proposes to spend twenty-two point five million dollars on the acquisition and development of non-congregate shelters, two point five million dollars on tenant-based rental assistance, nearly six point seven million dollars on supportive services, and five point six million dollars on administration. So those are some big numbers. What would it actually look like in practice? With this budget, HCDD expects to provide direct rental and utility assistance to approximately a hundred and sixty clients experiencing chronic or near chronic homelessness. We want to rehabilitate three hundred and seventy-five temporary supportive housing units for families experiencing domestic violence. We want to develop one hundred and thirty-five temporary supportive housing units for youth experiencing homelessness and provide five hundred and ten families with supportive services. HCDD is hoping to fund non-congregate shelters with about twenty-two point five million dollars, which would provide about two hundred and eighty-five temporary housing units. For those who are unfamiliar, non-congregate shelter refers to shelters where each individual or household has a living space that offers some level of privacy, such as hotels, motels, dormitories. These shelters should prioritize low and moderate income families or individuals, families fleeing domestic violence, and youth experiencing homelessness. We want to prioritize the development of non-congregate shelters that are near bus stops, parks, libraries, grocery stores, and medical centers, and that provide additional wraparound or supportive services like case management, access to primary healthcare, partner-providing mental health services, financial management, life skills training, rental support, and recreational and art facilities. So, what supportive services should HCDD fund using the HomeARP grant? We'd like to hear from you. Please complete the poll on your screen, and we'll discuss your answers in a moment. So, using HomeARP, what supportive services should we fund? A, supportive housing assistance, case management, legal services for veterans, employment assistance services, housing counseling, homeless prevention, or other supportive services? Okay, it looks like we've got answers coming in. Thus far, homelessness prevention and case management seem to be our top answers. Oh, case management really skyrocketing here, supportive services as well. Okay. Thank you. And again, we will continue to monitor these polls as the presentations continue. So thank you for your feedback. And now, what do we want to hear from you? It's time to move on to our public comment period, and we want to hear your thoughts about these budgets and the goals that we have presented to you today. You have until November sixteenth to make any comments on the HomeARP grant, but right now, we will be opening the floor to take public comments. Remember, not only do we want to hear from you regarding the HomeARP allocation plan, but we also want to get your input on the twenty twenty-two annual action plan. You can also make public comments on the annual action plan during our next public hearing on the tenth. For those of you who are new to the process or need a refresher and are asking, what should I talk about? This is what we want to hear from you. How should we, the city, measure our goals? How should we allocate funds? What are some new programs or services we should consider? What do or don't you like about your neighborhood? And what are your needs? Ultimately, tell us how we could better help you in your home and in your neighborhood. And now I'm going to turn it over to our principal planner and division manager, Mary Itz, who will be monitoring the public comment session. Mary?
Hi, I, um, I wanted to clarify our public, our public comment period for the Home Allocation Plan will be open through November nineteenth. I'm Mary Itz, I'm the Division Manager with the City of Houston Housing and Community Development Department. We're now moving into the public hearing portion of the agenda, and this is where we want to hear from you. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Microsoft Teams, which has a button at the top with a hand and a, and a happy face. If you can't find that and you would still like to make a public comment, you can type in the chat. After we go through those on Microsoft Teams, we'll, I'll have, go through the telephone callers. If you're watching on Facebook or HTV and would like to make a, a comment live or would like to join us for the group discussions, please join us online or by phone to participate. You can join through Microsoft Teams at V I T dot L Y backslash twenty twenty-one F P H, or you can call our toll-free line at one three six, one nine three six seven five five one five two one, and you can use the meeting ID of two three five six six three one five seven pound. We also have a Spanish line, which is the same number with a different ID, six three zero eight three three zero six one pound. Uh, now we'll review the ground rules. So a few house rules for the virtual public hearing. Each speaker has three minutes to testify. Yielding time to another person is not allowed. The testimony is being recorded and will be transcribed. The public comment session is not a question and answer session, but if you do have a question, we'll document it and try to find a means to get back to you. Summaries of the public comment received today with the responses will be included in the final annual action plan. So the process will be that I'll call out your name, and you can unmute yourself, and your time will begin. Each commenter should state their name for the record before you begin. As you begin, there will be a timer on the screen counting down to help you know when to wrap up your comment. So as a reminder, please raise your hand or, um, or put your name in the chat box. I believe we have two participants who have raised their hands. Nikia Sims. Please unmute yourself, state your name, and your three minutes should begin.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Like she stated, my name is Nikia Hillary Sims. I am an advocate for housing as a human right, as well as a champion for authentic diversity, equity, and inclusion. I would first off like to thank some of the members of the City of Houston that have listened to advocates such as myself, who have often felt like we are unheard. I would like to thank Myrtle Skillhorn, and I would also like to just thank the team that, I'm trying to get the name, sorry. Robin, he's also with the City of Houston for including people with lived expertise when it comes to making decisions about who gets funding. His name is Robin James. I'd like to thank him for hearing my concerns as an advocate. I'd also like for everyone, if you're on the line right now, quickly, if you're within the homeless continuum of care and you feel like you're a part of a group that's not been included, the Coalition for the Homeless, they are looking for, today is the last day before four o'clock, to do submissions so that you can make decisions related to the NOFO funding, you can make decisions related to where services are provided and how they're provided, and just be at the proverbial table. So that's at the Coalition for the Homeless Steering Committee. Apologies, but I did interlace, so I'm not sure everything that was discussed. One of the things that I had a question about at one of the earlier city council meetings was once, and I'm not sure if this was even within the scope of what was discussed earlier, but the first-time home buyers program. I know at some of the advocacy meetings, I'd asked about zip code base and seeing where these programs are being utilized and what zip codes, to see if there's a desperate impact. Also, when the city opened these programs up to city, City of Houston employees, when we talk about performance and we talk about data, I think it's important for transparency for us as citizens to see how that change has impacted the program as far as the numbers of City of Houston employees that have been able to benefit from the first-time home buyers program and other demographics. I thank you all for your time. Once again, my name is Nikia Hillary Sims. I am an advocate, and I have lived expertise and am looking forward to providing comments and continuing to hopefully have people like myself have equitable opportunities to not only be at the table, but to have an impact. Thank you all for your time, and remember to make time for self-care and have a great day.
Thank you very much for your comments. Um, I just want to remind everyone that our consolidated annual performance valuation report does have maps of programs and assistance at the, in one of the appendix items, so that may help to show where funding has gone in the past year. So I just wanted to let y'all know about that. I'll move to the next person. Gladys House. Would you like to unmute yourself?
Is, is, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Just three questions. One is, who is the contract compliance officer or who monitors the compliance of the HCDD programs? This one in particular. A question too is, at previous HCDD public hearings, I've presented questions in writing and never got any answers. I did follow-ups, still didn't get any answers from your former director. And three, who is the contact person to, I, I, I can meet to discuss the funding for nonprofits to provide social services and construct a youth center to offer further social services?
Sure. And then, yeah, please, go ahead.
No, that, that's basically it for now. I, I just want to get to someone. I don't want to wait until the deadlines for getting this funding before someone from your agency contacts us and gives us, and provides that information. So if there's someone else I need to talk to, to get that information, I would certainly appreciate it, since time is of the essence.
Sure. And I just want to remind everyone that this is a public comment forum and not a question and answer, but I'll, I'll try to answer as many questions as I can. The, our Public Facilities Program does provide funding for things to be built within the community and every, as funding is available, there are notice of funding availability called NOFAs that go out for the community. there are notice of funding availability called NOFAs that go out for the community. You can view the NOFAs on our website, also through the Strategic Procurement Division. If, if you're interested, you can become a vendor, and you'll be emailed when new opportunities come about.
Am I three minutes up?
If, uh...
I know you've been kind of long with it.
I'm, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I thought you were, had completed your...
Well, I just wanted to yield so that I, I can, I know you're limited in responding, but I just want to make sure that someone would contact me, and I'm going to put my contact information over in the chat section so that we can get on top of this public facilities. And the NOFAs, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sure.
I can unmute myself now. I'll mute myself.
Well, thank you very much for your comment. The next commenter, Maria Morales. Would you like to unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and begin your public comment?
Hi, good afternoon or good evening almost, everyone. My name is Maria Morales. I'm actually a Houston Realtor. I've been getting a few emails from you guys, so I decided to join in. One of the things is with a lot of the development that's going on, I grew up in the Fifth Ward community. Actually, just went back to live back in the Fifth Ward community. And I'm noticing that a lot of certain, how would you say? A lot of public areas such as underpasses near Fifty-Nine or even exiting Fifty-Nine, that kind of is on the, the west side of Fifth Ward. There's actually not enough lighting. And we, as a city, have bus stops that are located under these underpasses or near there. So I know I'm familiar with statistics, with areas being well-lit. With a lot of the development, the new is always great. A lot of these areas, there's a lot of gentrification as well going on. But is this something that we're keeping in mind to continue to keep these areas lit, just like any other areas that we're promoting and developing? That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much for your public comment. While our Housing and Community Development funding does go to a lot of different activities within the city, we, I, other departments do, uh, do lighting and, and street improvements. But we will take your public comment, and thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? I don't see any names in the chat for public comment. If anybody else would like to make a comment, let me open the comments for people on the phone line, the telephone. If anybody would like to make a comment who's on a phone, please speak up right now. You can unmute yourself using star six, I believe.
Good afternoon.
Hi, please state your name, and we'll begin the public comment.
My name's Donna Brownwell. I am calling from West Houston, a community called Carverdale. My comment is, uh, throughout the City of Houston, there are numerous social service organizations and nonprofit organizations that provide aid to low-income homeless, at-risk, food-insecure residents. However, in the northwest sector of the City of Houston, before you leave the city bounds and move out into the county, there are none of these type services available to the low-income residents that reside in these areas. There is no job training program, there is no substance abuse program, there's no mental health, uh, help program, there's no senior services program, et cetera, et cetera. My comment is that I think that the City Development Department needs to be knowledgeable that all poverty and all-stricken families do not live in the inner city, that there is struggle out in the suburbial areas of Houston as well. And we would like to see some of these issues, if not all of them, addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Either in Microsoft Teams or on, by phone? Okay, well, I think now we will end our public comment period. We're about to move into the breakout groups. So this will end the public hearing portion and also end the session on Facebook and, and HTV. I want to remind y'all, don't forget, we would like your input on the Home ARP Allocation Plan. If you didn't comment today, but you would like to comment before November nineteenth, there are several resources available on our main webpage. And you can submit your comment in a variety of ways. Online, our, our main webpage is houstontx.gov/housing. You can learn more about the Home ARP Allocation Plan. You can also submit a comment by email, You can also submit a comment by voicemail at eight-three-two-three-nine-four-eight-four-zero-zero. And you can submit a comment by sending it through snail mail to our office at twenty-one hundred Travis Street, ninth floor, and the zip code is seven-seven-zero-zero-two. We also do have a short survey on our main webpage that you can also make a comment about the Home Allocation Plan. I'll now hand it over to Chris to explain a little bit more about the breakout activity.